Second panel.
So Brian and Todd, you know, we're done. I don't know if you're, we're done with our special or work session? I don't know if you can hear me?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, I mean, we're starting in a regular meeting, just FYI, so.
Yeah, I was gonna hang on for just a little bit to see if someone had any public comment concerning the earlier issue, and if not, I was probably gonna, um, bow out, I said that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Are we doing a call to order, or no?
Yes.
We're doing it.
We're taking a break, Richard, for a second or so.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, okay.
I couldn't tell if people are going to the bathroom or not.
Well, if you gotta go, go ahead and go. Okay, we'll start by, during the budgetary agents.
Of the United States of America, in two three quarters for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the agenda for the special city council meeting for Sept-, or November the twentieth of twenty twenty. We have a call to order and roll call, so we will start again with Tom Garden.
Aye, here.
Dan Rettigal.
Here.
Doug Henke, here. John Morrison.
Here.
Richard Nielsen.
Here.
Here, okay. Uh, we also have, um, Art Falsen here, and, uh, our city attorney. Where's, um?
Joe called in because of the road. I told him not to come down. Derek will be in here shortly. Derek will be coming shortly. He had another meeting. So.
Okay, well, everybody is present and accounted for then. So we will do the next one, the citizens' comments, which I don't believe there's anybody here, so we can move on with that.
Now, I had talked to a couple of citizens, and they said they were coming in for comments.
Nobody's here, so.
Ah, too bad.
Okay, we'll move on with the adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to that?
No.
Okay. Need a motion on that?
Emotion. Emotion, we adopt the agenda?
And a motion made. In second. We do have to go again with, um, Tom Garden.
Aye.
Dan Rettigal.
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. John Morrison.
Aye.
Richard Nielsen.
Aye.
Aye, ayes passed. We're adopting the agenda as is. Okay, we can move on to the consent agenda. We can do a couple of them at a time.
Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
And approval of the minutes, the whole works is that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And again, we'll do it. Most have been made in a second to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments. And financial, and again, Tom Garden.
Aye.
Aye. Dan Rettigal.
Aye.
Aye, Doug Henke, aye. John Morrison.
Aye.
Richard Nielsen.
Aye.
Aye, ayes passed. All right, we can move right along here. Uh, presentations and public hearings, recognition of proclamations. Is any particular, um, that part of it? How far out is Eric, did he say? Derek, what did you say?
Um, no, what I would do is just go to legal. Then I would kind of come back to ensuring when he comes back.
Okay. Then we will move on with legal. And the other city attorney is here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, first item is the all of the lot combination you previously did regarding the valuable home property. You have in your packet a depiction that shows the lot, and it shows a dotted hash mark line which would be the normal drainage utility easements that are between all the lots that are up in that platted area. Um, after we let the dust settle on the approval of the resolution that you did the lot combination, we typically would, uh, go ahead and approve the vacation and removal of those easements in the middle of that lot. So nothing gets placed there that might somehow be impacted in the future. Uh, the bottom line, the process is very simple. As long as you're okay with doing it, we would publish notice of that vacation and bring it back at the next meeting for a resolution to adopt. You do have to handle the pub- public hearing, uh, but it's a very straightforward process. I assume there'd be no comments whatsoever. But, um, if you're okay with that, Mark and I will put together the materials to vacate it. It usually is the last step we do, and usually, you know, a month or two after we've approved something like this, just so we know they're not coming back and asking for something different. So I think if you're okay with that, it's simply a consensus to let Mark and I know that we should go forward and do that.
Yep, okay.
Is there any discussion on that?
That's all we need. If you're okay with it, we're cool. Okay. We'll bring that back, uh, you know, my last, uh, agenda.
This is the newer?
Yeah. And then the next item you had on the agenda was, uh, item B under legal, which was regarding winter parking regulations you have in the packet to city code pages. And Mark had an explanation in his city administrator update, um, and I think it was regarding technically the fines, Mark? Is that what it is?
Well, I guess, um, Mayor and Chief, you guys kind of were talking about this a couple of months ago and wanted to put on the agenda at the November meeting, so I don't know, Mayor, if you want to just talk about what your concerns are with how things are currently going with the, you know, with the enforcement or the fines or however, whatever your concerns are there.
Well, over the period of the last winter, uh, there has been concerns, some from the public and also from, um, Wayne Eric, when it comes to the plowing, that we have numerous ones, and it seems to always be the same violation all the time, that seem to feel that they don't have to comply with the ordinances, which in turn requires that the police department show up, and that doesn't always create goodwill. So this way, I feel that if we, um, start to enforce this law, and I'd say make some definite changes in it as to the cost factor, people may wake up and realize that, you know, it's gonna cost me some money. I guess I better get out there and get them moved. I would also like for, uh, Chief Jolender to, uh, bring up his opinion as to what goes on. I do wish that Wayne was here also to explain some of his feelings on it, and what it does and the cost of, uh, going back and redoing, um, that particular locations where the vehicles have been parked and the snow has not been moved. So Chief Lee, if you could come forward, please, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Are you all able to hear me? Okay, Richard, can you hear me?
Richard, are you still there?
Is everybody able to hear me? Okay.
We can hear you, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Um.
Looks like Mark's coming back.
Ah, good.
Okay, try again.
Richard, are you able to hear me?
Hello? You're having a good time here.
Richard, are you able to hear me?
Uh, I can hear somebody now.
Okay, it's Lee. We were gonna talk a little bit about parking.
Oh, yes, okay, now I recognize your voice.
Sorry, I'm wearing my mask, and it's got a filter in it, so it's a little muffled.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so.
I didn't include that in my, uh, communications.
Okay. Well, the mayor asked about enforcement and kind of the things that we see with it, and our goal, of course, is just voluntary compliance. It would be so nice if people would just move their vehicles, keep them off the public streets during snow removal. Um, we have knocked on doors, we have put multiple, uh, warnings on Facebook about it, and it's been on the city webpage. And like the mayor said, we just get kind of a, a same group from time to time that just will not move their vehicles. So what happens a lot is, Mr. Eric and I have numerous conversations. We had one today about the snowfall. Um, one of the concerns that was coming up was on Red Wing Avenue. Right now, they can't put their vehicles off the street because of the concrete work that's needing to be completed and so forth. So after visiting with Mr. Eric today, we decided to give the residents on Red Wing Avenue a pass tonight. So if there is more than two inches of snow, but what we run into here, for the lack of a better term, is a lot of hair splitting with our public. So we'll go around and write citations, and then somebody will come in and complain that, well, I don't have two inches of snow in my house, and here's my ruler. And then somebody else will say, well, I have four inches in my house. So we end up trying to have this debate back and forth on when does two inches, two inches, which is one of the small debates that we have compared to a lot of the, well, I thought it would melt, I didn't think it would be a big deal. Um, so what we decided to do after some conversation was, our plan this year is to write citations right away. You know, the fine right now is twenty dollars. Um, they can come and pay that at city hall. Um, after some heavy discussion, we've decided to, um, increase that, but we're also going to tow vehicles this year. We've talked to Peterson Ford, they're completely okay with doing that. So if you come out and your vehicle's been towed or gone, it is probably going to be at Peterson Ford. Um, this is really causing kind of a, a concern with our public works. It's making for a bad neighbor, in a sense, too, because a neighbor will come out and complain about, well, I came out, moved my stuff, um, now it's clear in front of my house, but then go around the neighbor's place, you know, that's a big ice shed leaning into my property, and so it just, we decided this is what we're gonna do this season. I really would like the public just to move their cars. It's our simple request. Um, I think we're all kind of at the level of getting communications. It'd be hard pressed to know that you wouldn't know that there's a snowstorm coming. So this year, we're looking at increasing the fine. We're also looking at, after the first citation, your vehicle will be towed. So if it's gone, please contact Peterson Ford. I know other jurisdictions do this, and it's efficient. Again, I'd rather you just move your car, because I'm sure you could find a better use for that source of money, but it is what it is.
The excuses that you get, is it that I don't have anywhere to park my car, or I didn't know, I, you know, I slept and I didn't know it was gonna store? I mean, or is this usually what?
My car doesn't run, um, I don't have a title for it, which then we cross that bridge, too, about you came with them on the street. Um, I don't know where I was to park it. Uh, Mr. Eric has been kind enough to say that you could park your vehicle in the swimming pool parking lot. There's no charge for that. You can park it up there. We really bent over backwards trying to be, you know, genuine and help people out here, but it's getting to a point that the public's demanding that we do something, and the public is, is our, is our boss, so this is what they want.
Until there's teeth in it, you can, you can talk till you're blue in the face, and it ain't matter.
And for some people, I think the, the small fine that it is, is worth it. Fine for twenty bucks, I don't have to put on my overcoat and grab my shovel and dig this out and move this. It's worth the, the twenty dollars. But it's just, it's just gonna be better if people can just move their vehicles.
Yes.
One of them that we had, um, I will say over by my, um, shop, he was consistent in that not moving it, and I know, Lee, that you did take him up there, I believe, twice.
We drove him back from parking his car. We bent over backwards, helped the public here.
And that street there, when the plow comes by, then the neighbor across from him has come over and said, well, you know, I got a tough time getting out of my car, out of my driveway because of the snow being packed up, because this guy doesn't move it. Uh, I talked to that individual on it, and I says, how about you taking your vehicle and placing it in the alley? And placing it on your property, um, there, and he said, well, they don't plow the alley. Well, that we know that they do, and that has done it pretty much the same side of the town as, uh, the street does. So I'm saying this year, I hate to make people pay. And there's some times that it, it happens that, um, it just happens. But I say this year, I think we need to enforce with a, a greater amount of fine. It costs the police department X amount of dollars to go there, and the rest of the public that are taxpayers that are paying for this are the ones that are winding up having to pay for the police department when that individual is getting a free pass. So I say, I think that we should make it worthwhile, and like you say, second time around, you go out to Peterson Ford and you pick it up.
At twenty-five dollars a fine, I still think people, especially in this time with the pandemic and so forth, they would have a better use for that, but we need to get this under control. It, it gets to be an issue. I cannot imagine Mr. Eric's phone blowing up. I don't mind us with people either upset about a ticket or, you know, wondering why someone didn't get a ticket. So this year, we're gonna try kind of a, a harder approach initially, for lack of a better term, or a consistent approach, and hopefully people will just comply.
I have a question. You posted, you said that, uh, they can take their car up to the pool.
Yep.
Is that posted somewhere or written somewhere?
Yeah, just put it in, given today on social media. I've got one gentleman that contacts me every year about it. It's surely common knowledge, and if it's not, we can advertise it more. But yes, you can park your car up there. All that they ask is that you park them as neatly as you can so they can get as many vehicles in that area if needed.
Sure. That's just temporary.
Yeah, it's not long-term, but we'd like it to move it up force once the streets are clear, but if it's there for a couple of days, Mr. Eric said he's fine with that. He just wants the streets cleared so he can do his job.
I'd say just to be on the safe side, since we're gonna have a penalty in enforcement, you know, for folks that may not be much into social media, if we can get it in the leader as well.
And their newsletter, yeah.
Yeah, or the newsletter or whatever, yeah, they, either one, just to get that word out. Because I, I didn't know that till tonight that you could do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's really nice. I.
Mr. Eric is great. I mean, we have an amazing public works department, and they're very, very nice to work with. Same thing with our utilities, of course, but anything we can do to help our public, we'll certainly try to do, but this is getting out of hand. It's gotta be addressed, so.
It's inefficient, it's costly.
Yeah.
And it just, yeah. So Mark, I was confused on the, we have the Canyon City Code that was, had some highlighted stuff in there, then we have ordinance fifty-four thirds series. Our, so.
Well, basically, um.
So do we need to do anything?
No, I put it in for information. Okay, because we've talked about this. Sometimes it comes up here in public comment, or it's just brought up by council members, and we never have the ordinance, so I wanted you, you, everybody to have the ordinance so you could kind of tell what we're talking about, and, you know, it's just a matter of enforcement level. That's really what it comes down to here, so, um, all of the abilities contained in that ordinance to, to write tickets or to tow, and it's the discretion of the police department how it's enforced, basically, like every other item, you know, in the city code that they, they enforce. You know, traffic and parking and all those kind of things. So that, it's more for information.
I think that should probably be overhauled in the first place. Um, what the fines are, and also stated in there that, um, the second time around, your vehicle is out at Peterson Ford, it gets towed.
My only concern.
And it isn't in here at all.
My only concern with saying it will be this is, if we call Peterson Ford for some reason, and let's say their tow truck is broke down, they can't get a driver, whatever comes up, um, we have to then go to another tow company like, um, a Bergs out of Zimbroda, or West Concord, or whomever, which again is going to increase the fine and fee because I don't sure what it would cost to have your vehicle from here up to Peterson Ford, but I would assume it would be more costly if you had to take it to Zimbroda or something. So if we're gonna put that in there, I would say try the closest one first every time, but if for some reason Peterson Ford can't, and I don't want someone thinking that we're just towing their vehicle to a larger or farther location because we can't. It's like, I'd rather it be local if we could, but.
And Mayor, the ordinance isn't gonna say where it's towed to.
It's what?
The ma-, the ordinance doesn't specify where vehicles are towed to.
Yeah.
It just says that they can be towed, and then we figure out where, the police department figures out the best location for that.
Can be and will be, it's two different things.
We can do it, we'd like that. I just want it consistent so that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say and, and ask. This is what, Lee, I would go with you this way. What does you want in this enforcement? The fines, the whole works, and lay it out for us. You're the ones that are gonna be doing the, the footwork.
I like a little bit of wiggle room in it because we might run into some, some situations to where you can't tow it for some, some reason, and then I'm gonna get, and the public really holds their feet to the fire in a lot of things nowadays, and when I completely understand that, it can really get to be some long discussions on, well, you said in this that you will do this, and say, well, we can't plan for every si- si- situation because of.
What if that night they had a medical emergency and they were at the hospital, and now you're gonna drag their car away when they were, you know, I, yeah, life gets messy.
I agree with that.
Life gets messy.
Visitors, kids home from college, yeah, you, you have to have flexibility in enforcement, and every ordinance that every city has, you know, Attorney Rick's can probably answer this better than I can, has flexibility of citation or towing, or both.
I'm guessing you can probably picture in your mind the ones that you have thrown the rope out as far as you can go, and it's like, you know, until we tow your car, you're not gonna get it, versus other ones who are, you know, buy the book all the time, but something came up, so you cut them a little slack.
Yeah. And that's the nice thing about living and working in our community is, we, we can do that. We do that routinely because we know our public. And we, so we just try to get voluntary compliance. It'd be so much easier if they would just say, yep, I'm moving my vehicle, moving my trailer, whatever. Yep.
Yeah, it's not like, we want to be like Minneapolis. It's a money pick.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not looking at this. I would rather not write any tickets and not have to tow any cars. I would rather people have their stuff off the streets and, because we've gone so far as to knock on doors. We've actually had situations where people have been drinking in their home, and they're like, I don't feel comfortable moving my car. We move their cars for them. We've been more than accommodating, but it's getting to, to the point now that we have to start putting some teeth into this and, and holding some people more accountable. Any other questions?
Is actually the fine twenty-five dollars now?
Yes. It's a twenty, I think it's twenty-five.
It costs us that much or more to shovel gear, sidewalk shovel, so I'd say this here, I should, I would look at doubling that.
Okay. Whatever the council wants to do, we're completely fine with that.
All right, but we have to go through the regular meetings. So do we have to amend this ordinance?
Yeah, we would, we would bring that, the idea, what I think, bring, bring back in December, revise ordinance that one raises the fine, if that's what I'm hearing, but also allows for the discretionary towing subject to public works and the police department if necessary, and fire department, which is usually what we have. It isn't real clear here that that's there, so I think we could add that in very simply, and Lee has got that discretion along with other city staff.
You need to say maybe to her.
Exactly, it's subject to towing if needed or necessary or, you know, whatever. And it's, there are many times where Lee says we're not doing it, there's been a, you know, two-foot snowfall, and nobody could move anything, and it's, you know, we're all gonna dig out, so.
And this is where, like, public works have been great at calling us, too, and we're really good at looking for vehicles, but they might call and find something that we missed. So we'll show up and try to get over the person, it's like, so, well, we'll try, but if you won't or can't move it, then it could very well anything tow.
Well, you pretty well know who the offenders are.
Yeah.
And I believe there's about ten or twelve that are consistent.
All right, so that would ask the council for a motion to authorize the city attorney to revise the ordinance? Um, or come back, you know, with the draft revision of, of ordinance, uh, thirteen oh five thirty-three, um, dealing with snow parking?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second. To review, is that what you should use it? This, when was that, Ben? Um, thirteen oh five six three three to be written up.
If I could add one thing, Mayor? It, it, it's, it's more than three-three, it's other sections, so I would just say in chapter thirteen oh five, if everybody's okay with that.
That's fine, I mean.
Yep.
Fifteen, what was that?
Chapter thirteen oh five.
Okay.
Instead of thirteen oh five thirty-three, let's just say thirteen oh five.
So you're gonna pretty much rewrite the whole thing?
Was necessary, yeah.
Okay. So a motion has been made in second. We'll go that way with chapter thirteen, thirteen oh five, and all of those in favor? Or give their opinion, Tom Garden?
Aye.
Aye. Dan Rettigal?
Aye.
Aye. Doug, Doug Henke, aye. John Morrison?
Aye.
Richard Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed, so. Kind of rates, you've got yourself a job behind you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we can go on with that. Now we can go back to, uh, engineering. And that, Derek, are you prepared?
Yes, I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just got, uh, a couple of things to cover here tonight. For Red Wing Avenue, we'll start with that. Um, just a quick update on the status of that project. Most of you probably realize that they finally got payment downs. That's a good major milestone, uh, to see you go in on our, to get that done. Um, I guess the, the next major thing that we're looking for, that we have started to hear some comments here this week, maybe late last week, is there's a number of driveways that are not done yet. Um, people have been waiting for a month, a little bit more in some cases. We're having a little trouble with a concrete subcontractor. They kind of stemmed back from the cold weather, wet weather over the past couple of weeks, um, that been in their schedule. Nonetheless, they have told us that they are coming out Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to finish up, so hopefully.
That means tomorrow.
That means tomorrow, Thursday, Friday. Yep.
Yep.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, so once they finish up those remaining, I think there was like seventeen or eighteen driveways, um, the work would, for the most part, be considered substantially.
Would all the cement work on this project be done then? Meaning the, uh, sides of the alley, Fourth Street?
Yep.
And the steps and alley, and driveways and?
Yep.
All that, okay.
Yep, yep. Really, really anything that matters from a connection standpoint. They have the driveways. There's, uh, the alley connection that you mentioned, and there's also, uh, a handful of sidewalk curb ramps at the intersections that they got there in. Um, basically what's going on, they've been telling us, yeah, I'll be there in a couple of days. They don't show up, be there in a couple of days, or they show up only for a couple of hours, that type of thing, and we're still left early. But they have told us that they will have crews out in full force for the remainder of this week here, so hopefully, because as long as that holds true, their relations will be, uh, you know, this issue too much longer. Other than that.
So were they waiting for a good freeze?
Yeah. No. They were, they were trying to get out of the work because of some of the cold weather, um, but concrete is more than doable.
Now, now, the cold weather has not been happening except for the last couple of days. So what were they doing prior to that?
Well, the, the only.
Was the out this project?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the only, I, I believe the only reason why they're, they're, uh, being a little bit difficult is, is they're probably lined up too much work for the year, and they're trying to get out of a couple of jobs. Um, I've been talking with our, our general contractor, Wenzel. It sounds like he's been pretty firm with them and let them know that, you know, if they don't finish up with their work, um, you know, any of the liquidated damages that will come along with finishing that work. you know, any of the liquidated damages that would come along with finishing that work late would be directly passed on to them. It sounds like that's gotten their attention and, and that's what we can expect for, for them to show up or, you know, play it this week.
So you're pretty certain that it will get done this week? I mean, the weather has a, a big part of it, but I know they weren't out there today. I went through everything and even, you know, the mats that they placed over the driveways to keep them dry and that were scattered all over, so there was nobody there. And I did check it this morning about mid-morning and again around three o'clock, and there was no activity, so.
Yep.
And one again, I know that there certainly are people up there that are upset, and I certainly would be too.
Oh, yeah.
And that was it. I mean, they're hauling their garbage containers and recycling to side streets. They're parking their vehicles on side streets, so I would say this year, I expect to see some work being done this weekend on the driveways at least.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So that's, that's what we've been told. If anything changes, but then I'll get a notice, I'll clarify. I, I haven't received any indication that they won't move here. They provided that update at the beginning of the week, so it was in yesterday. So I guess that's what we, that's what we have to go off of right now. But just wanted to bring that up because it's been a topic of discussion that I'm sure you guys have heard about. I guess in terms of action items for the Red Wing Avenue project, we've got the next monthly pay request. It's requested for approval. This one is pay estimate number six, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents. So this includes work that was completed up until October twenty-third, so it does not include any of the pavement that was just recently done. But it's a lot of the prep work that went into it probably to have a paving crew out there.
I have a question on pay request five real quick, just so I don't forget this, but like they haven't cashed that check, and we kind of need to know if they're gonna cash it, if they want to wait till after the first of the year or whatever. Do you have an October check? Is that, you know, hasn't been cleared? We need to transfer more money or whatever we gotta do if they're not gonna cash, cash it. I gotta get that money moved out of the bank, so. I don't know if you could check with them on that?
I can. I, I spoke with Sue late last week.
Okay.
If, if she wanted me to send over another notification, and she said she was gonna talk with the auditor again.
Well, we need to know what they want to do because, I mean, you know, the banks have to be collateralized to a certain level where we move in these big amounts of money for these contractors who expect, normally the money's in and out of there in five days, let's just say.
I'm not sure I've ever heard of this problem before.
Yeah, they.
Won't you cash her his?
Exactly. They said they don't want to cash until next year.
Oh, no.
And we said, you don't think that, we talked to our auditors, you can imagine how that went.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, they, not good. They called me and I'm like, okay, I got it. So anyway, but now they, they cashed one or two of them, and then now, you know, we have the October one, they still haven't cashed it, so I don't know if you could find out what.
I said another, another line to them. I mean, when we had last discussed this, he, he said that he would do them, so.
And I'll say this, Mark, if, if, if they don't want to cash the checks, why are you approving the pay requests at this point in time to pay them?
Right, yeah.
I mean, I mean, honestly, that's, if they don't want the money, don't give them money. Don't make me a goose on it. That's crazy.
I know it is. I've never.
We, we've never heard of this, Mike, you?
Either that or put a stop order date on it. You gotta, you gotta ten days to get this thing.
Only valid.
Ready?
Checks don't have the ninety-day void on it that I see on front of me, but.
You know, in farming though, if you, you can prepay your bills coming in, you know, like fertilizer and all of that sort of thing for the next year. So that may be what they're looking at a little bit, but interesting.
I'm not sure it is, but, okay.
So what if you get on the cashier's check and then as soon as we issue the cashier's check with this?
Well, I mean, I already asked about why are you, and you said no.
Yeah, they wouldn't do it.
So I just.
It sounds like they're wiggling the.
They're running about these two dollars and they don't want the money this year because they have to pay it back to the government. They gotta have something going on with that.
Yeah, they're probably had a wiggle in the road, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them whatever they got going on with the IRS, we don't want to.
Right, right.
Yeah. Another problem.
Should we sit on this pay request?
All right, here.
I think that's.
I can talk with him again. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna recommend not doing the payment in thirty days or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think undercurrent contract, we have to approve it within thirty days.
Yeah.
I mean, at least by, by approving it, we're giving them the opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
About this, we have a meeting scheduled a week from tonight for the red wing assessments. Can we put on the agenda the pay request number six, and then you can talk to them and say, you cash pay request number five first, and then we'll approve pay request number six.
Yeah, we could set that up as a special meeting kind of after the hearing or what, yeah.
Because otherwise, if they're gonna play this game, I don't think we should play the game. I mean, they, you know, they, they asked to get paid, and let's pay them and be done with it, but if they're trying to juggle numbers to the IRS, that's not anything we need to be.
Well, they have cashed some of the checks, I believe. I think Derek said some of the earlier, some of the earlier ones. I don't know where they're at. I mean, I think some of them haven't cashed. It's just, no, it's starting up again and.
Last, when I, when I last spoke with Sue, the last two of them, they have not done. That was last week. So four.
Attorney Rigsley, what do you want us to do?
I think it's best. I think they have got it. Good point.
You, you're, you're okay with?
Yeah, yeah. There's no reason to move forward tonight. I mean, there's nothing speeding you can't do in the next meeting, so that's fine. I would table this until the next meeting. Mark can, can put them on for the purpose.
Okay, I would move, we table this pay request until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. Okay.
Aye.
We'll have to do this again. A motion has been made in second for pay request number six to be delayed until, should we give the date on it? What was that, November?
Seventeen.
What was it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay. Tom Gard?
Aye.
Dan Regical?
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. John Mortensen?
Aye.
Richard Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed.
Can't make it up. All right, so next item for the Red Wing Avenue project is a, a change order number three. If you remember a couple of weeks ago, when that first round of snow came, there were several concerns over the, you know, the paving schedule and being able to finish up with some of the prep work for paving. So at that point, the contractor indicated that some of those delays, they could get the paving contractor out as they did, and they would like to reset that substantial completion date to November fourteenth. So the original contract substantial completion date, which is basically adding all the pavement and the concrete with them, was October thirty-first. We're obviously passed that. So with this, with this change order here tonight, this would, you know, set it back another two weeks. Basically what you're saying by doing this is you don't intend on assessing liquidated damages to the contractor for that two-week-long period that were approved. There's one other minor revision to the definition of substantial complete for this particular contract. In the original contract, it stated that we wanted all the grass, the second half of the project, or phase two of the project, to be planted, given how wet the year it is. I mean, that grass seed's not going to germinate. They recommended that they delay that until next spring and just put down temporary mulch. That's what they have done. So that, that definition revision is basically just removing the grass seed and just saying that they just have a stabilizer in the house, so.
I have a question on this, so. It says here there's a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in the original contract price. What's going on there? Why?
That was, that was the change order associated with, that's a previous change order.
Okay.
That was the change order associated with that storm sewer revision over by Deep Street, by the mobile home park.
Oh.
If you're. Any of these, any of these change orders will show original contract price, previously approved change orders, the change of this one, and then what the new final would be. So there's, there's no cost change associated with this, it's just a.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody could have seen that significant snowfall in mid-July or early June. And I'm sure it's understandable that the completion date would probably have to be extended.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I really think that they have done a good job with it. I think they've really tried to be honest with it. I'm pretty well satisfied with what they've done except for this last bit with the concrete. But I can see, you know, having a cement mixer and a blacktop crew on the same spot doesn't always work out either, so. Okay. So we need change order number three. I'll make the motion. You a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion been made. Second for change order number three. Again, Tom Gard?
Aye.
Dan Regical?
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. John Mortensen?
Aye.
Richard Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed on the change order number three.
So next on the list here is a quick update on the business park project. I guess what they have completed to date is almost all of the underground utilities, being sanitary sewer and watering. So any of the work that was done in County Road Twelve, obviously complete. After they finished up with County Road Twelve, they moved up to the north end by the Comedy Shop along Highway Sixty and worked their way south from there, and they've actually got their sanitary watering in all the way into the business park. More recently here, they've been focusing more of their efforts on, on the grading work, and all the cuts and fills to balance that site. They started on that work here now, and that, that really makes up the majority of the work that they have remaining to the end of this month here. Basically what's, what's required of them by the end of the month is to, is to get the site basically fairly close to final grade, one foot plus or minus from final, final grade. I'm really more concerned that they have any of their fills that would be going in below any new roadways or turn lanes or anything like that, so that, that fill has several months to go through a freestyle cycle and settle out before we deconstruct any pavements over top of them next year. But yeah, that's, that's basically what they've been working on over the past couple of weeks here. Aside from some of these very wet days where they can't really do much of anything out there, they have been pretty diligent about getting multiple crews out on site there. If you ever had a chance to go out there during the day, there's a lot going on when the weather's nice.
It was, I was on COVID quarantine last week, and I could hear the work going on out there, so I gotta go outside and I could watch through the trees and, yeah, they were, they were going at it.
Yeah. So yeah, I guess that's a, a quick update on, on that project. But you know, along with the, the paving that they did on Red Wing Avenue, they finished up with the paving in County Road Twelve and the Good New Comedy Shop. So that, that work is done pretty early, most of it's waiting for the winter. So that was good to see. So in terms of action items for this project, it's hard to believe, it seems like they've been working for longer than this, but this is actually just first clear request on behalf of this project. So this would be work completed through October twenty-third. It's about, at, at that point, they were about twenty-five percent complete. I would say they're probably closer to half then, let me know. But the pay request that's on the agenda here tonight is three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. And again, work completed through the twenty-third of October.
Derek, I was out there on County Road Twelve this morning, again this afternoon, and there's one concern that I have. The payment is, pavement is in the blacktop, but they didn't do any shoulder work. There's quite a drop off. Now, I don't know if they did something later today or not, but with the weather coming in, somebody in the rest of the line, you know, for the center line. Can you ask them to get some fill in there? Because it's quite a, surprising, quite a drop off.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, that's a good drop off.
Okay, is that it on that one? More explanation on it, did you need?
Nope, we're just looking.
Anybody else?
I'll move the, we pay partial pay estimate number one, new amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, provided that they cash the check.
Okay, let's go to Wisconsin.
I'll second that.
Okay. You did it, huh? Okay. There's been a motion made in second for pay request number one to A-one excavating for three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Tom Gard?
Aye.
Aye. Dan Regical?
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. John Mortensen?
Aye.
Richard Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed. We'll pay the bill.
So next item for Kenyon Business Park, very similar to Red Wing Avenue, they had an October thirty-first completion date for pavement. Although that pavement is actually already done, I just wanted to keep those, you know, if we're changing the dates, just keep them the same just for simplicity's sake. So what's in the change order here tonight is revising the substantial completion date just for that pavement in County Road Twelve and the Good New Comedy Shop to November fourteenth.
Need a motion on that?
Hello?
Well, I'll, I'll motion.
Is there any other discussion?
Did you move that?
Yeah, I'll motion that we approve change order number two, extend the completion date to November fourteenth. I'll second.
I'll second.
You get it, huh? Richard Nielsen? Okay, motion has been made in second on change order number two. Tom Gard?
Aye.
Dan Regical?
Aye.
Doug, Doug Henke, aye. John Mortensen?
Aye.
Richard Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed on change order number two.
Okay, thank you. So last item that we had on our list here, it's been a project that Wayne and I have been working on with FEMA, probably close to a year now, maybe a little bit longer.
Mm-hmm.
So Riverside Park flood repairs. So this stems back from some of the flooding that happened in spring in twenty nineteen when we had that large snowstorm event. There's federal disaster relief that was given to FEMA for releasing the communities in our area. And that's what we've been working with, working with FEMA to try to get approval for grant funding, whatever it may be. And basically where we're at here tonight is we have received approval for a pretty substantial amount of money for repairs and mitigation work down in this Riverside Park area. So in, in the packet, they've actually got a little figure that you guys have seen before, just to kind of illustrate what the, what those improvements would look like. I guess just to summarize, there's a large section of the riverbank along the south side of, of the Zumbro River that's basically a vertical drop off. these Unbrow River that's basically a vertical drop-off. Uh, right now, uh, what we would be doing with that would be, uh, cutting that back to a stable toward a one slope. Traversible slope and the idea would be that once it's cut back, that you won't see as much erosion because it's back at a nice stable, flatter slope rather than the vertical edge that it's at right now. Um, there are a couple of of storm sewer culverts and storm sewer pipes, uh, that are outletting to the river, uh, on the south side. Right there, we'd be taking those end sections of pipe, uh, and resetting them. Uh, right now, there's one large thirty-inch pipe that's basically hanging out above the water right now, uh, that needs to be reset and restabilized. The other work, the eastern access road coming into, uh, into the park is, uh, is heavily eroded. Basically, what we'd be doing with that is we'd be excavating out all that rock, uh, all that rock filled that's been uh, placed in there and washed over the road, um, and putting that, uh, replacing that with newer stable material. Um, and then the other thing that we'd be doing with that is we'd be doing some drainage and ditch shaping and also adding in a new culvert to prevent water from washing across that road into the future and try to prevent this erosion, these erosion issues, um, that's been, uh, affecting that roadway for many years. So I guess just to summarize, uh, what's been proposed in the last month, maybe maybe it was two months ago, uh, FEMA came back and they told us that they would, uh, they would give like thirty thousand dollars in grant. And that wasn't anywhere close to what we were looking for, uh, to really make this effective. Uh, so we came back to them and basically asked for more and what what they have approved is basically the full amount of what we had asked for. So the the total project cost, uh, we're currently estimating at a hundred and fourteen, almost a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the grant funds that are available through FEMA and the state of Minnesota total up to just under ninety thousand dollars. So the remaining, uh, that would have to be, uh, paid for by the city would be about twenty percent or or twenty-five thousand dollars. One of the things that's that's kind of nice about this particular funding is these grant dollars have already been approved. So as I understand, the city should receive a check for this eighty-nine thousand dollars in like two months. A lot of times with these grants, you get the reimbursement. So you do the work, you send them the, you send them the invoices and then they'll reimburse you. They're gonna give you everything right upfront. If we go forward and do the project and the construction bids come in higher, we can actually go back and reapply for those increased costs that we're not accounting for in the estimate. On the other hand, if bid price is coming lower, as long as we do the scope of work that we told them we were going to do, we get keep money. So it's kind of a no lose situation from from this grant standpoint. Really, it seems like a pretty good deal. So, uh, with this, if we wanted to move forward with the project, um, what we would be asking for approval here tonight is basically approval for us to start working on the plans and specifications. Uh, a big part of doing, uh, any work that's adjacent to a river is going to be getting approval from the VNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. In order to get those permit approvals, you need to put together plans and specs. They want to see the details of how it's going to affect the river. So that's that's what we would do. What I have that that engineering work estimated at is, uh, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. That's what we'd be asking for approval for. Uh, that's intended to cover, uh, any of the design costs or any of our our construction services, you know, when the work works actually going into the ground next, next summer. This twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar figure, that is included in the overall project cost. That's grant eligible. This isn't, this isn't like additional cost. It would be involved in everything. Um, that's included in the totals in the, in the first page there. Are there any questions with this project? I know it's been a little while since we talked any details on this one.
When was their completion date?
What we have asked for, so we we've had to file an extension, uh, with FEMA because their original goal is to have spent this money already. It's been taken so long. Um, the extension that we filed for is for completion, I believe, in August of next year. So that would be all work done by August.
But what took so long was getting FEMA, you know, plugged into the amount of money that we needed. That's what really took months and months to get the right, you know, funding for figured out for them. So.
Unfortunately, with this, getting that information over to them, it doesn't really add up to, you know, a lot of time and effort. It's a lot of just give them the basic information, you wait for four months and you check in every week. Uh, finally, finally, we're there and they have obligated these funds and and it's ready to go. So basically, then you're gonna be asking for this, you know, asking counsel if you guys would like to go forward with this project.
And this project isn't something that is gonna take them an ordinary amount of time, right?
Yeah, no. I would see this as probably, you know, done within, once they're out there, I'd be surprised if they're working another two weeks realistically.
So if I'm reading this right, the engineering and surveying is estimated at twenty-nine-five, which is over the actual amount the city would need to kick in for the overall project. So once that basically is cut, we're done with putting out money. There's waiting for FEMA at that point then to.
Yeah.
No, that's already incorporated into the whole cost, the way I read it.
Yeah, the the engineering is included in the overall cost. That's just a portion of that. Um, so they're two separate things. Um, you know, some some grant up or or grant programs will say this can only be used for construction-related costs. This is not that. So it's not a hundred and fourteen plus the.
No, I knew that. I just, yeah. I thought, yeah, okay.
So realistically, I mean, you you could start using that just, you know, whenever you get the check from FEMA, you could start using it to pay.
And this would be a twenty-twenty-one project, so we wouldn't start, I mean, there wouldn't be any expenditure until next year. So it wouldn't be part of this year's budget. Be part of the twenty-one. The funds would come out and, you know, be paid next year.
Well, it's only gonna get worse if we don't do something about it.
Do we run the risk in any way of, uh, let's say next spring is a horrible wet and they can't get down there and start working till June or July? Then all of a sudden, we're past August and it's not done yet?
We fought for another extension.
Okay. We don't, we don't run the risk of losing that fund?
No.
Okay.
The the extension process is very easy. It's a simple online form. You submit it and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time it gets approved. So, um, good, I don't think that shouldn't be an issue. I would move we authorize Bolton to make for surveying engineering services for Riverside Park flood repair project.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion been made. Second, authorized Bolton to make to proceed with surveying and engineering services for this project. Tom Gard.
Aye.
Dan Regical.
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. John Morrison.
Aye.
Richard Nielsen.
Aye.
Okay, ayes passed. So you're in business.
Thank you. Nice show.
Okay. I guess we can go on then to old business. And we should be able to hear from Chief Shalender.
Can you hear me, Richard?
Yes, again.
Okay. Uh, updates on the building. We are so far, our.